We will now reconvene the regular meeting for the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, November 17, 2020. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, our streaming is still unavailable, so if you are watching from home, you will need to tune in either on the Comcast Channel 23 or the radio at KPEG 100.9 FM. If you are going to call in, please note the numbers 805-875-8201. And you will have three minutes to speak to an agenda item. Alternatively, as a reminder, you may always email commentary no later than 4:00 PM on Tuesdays, November 17, or 4:00 PMs before the council meetings to s_hadden@ci.lompoc.ca.us. City Attorney, any report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council met in closed session to discuss two items of significant exposure to litigation. Staff gave presentation on both those items. Council had a discussion, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update. We did receive all of the equipment for the streaming, so we have the equipment that essentially 99% of it had died. We did receive that, and now our IT and tech people are working to get that done. We're hoping to have it up and running by the end of this month. So by December 1st, or the December 1st meeting, we're hoping to have that back in streaming again, so that'll help. What I had was just a few items. Unfortunately, Santa Barbara County, as well as a number of other counties, well, actually quite a few counties within the state. We went backwards. Slow County, Ventura Counties, up north, Sutter Counties, down South, Hutter Counties. We're back into the purple tier. What this means is the following: indoor operations of fitness centers and gyms, restaurants, places of worship, movie theaters, museums, museums, zoos are not allowed in the purple tier. According to the state COVID-19 reopening framework officially known as the Blueprint for a Safer Community. I didn't go into all—there's a whole release on it we have on our website where the county public health has an issue, but we did unfortunately go back. In today's conference call, one of the comments was it could be well through the end of December before we get to move back to the red again. Some of that depends on vaccines and how readily available they are too, though, so. Some good news, though. The Village Library has a new book drop. It's funded by the Friends of the Library and installed by the county. The book drops at both libraries are now fully open and returned for materials before we had them closed on the weekends. We didn't have any staffing, so those are open for materials essentially 24/7. We cannot take any additional donations at this time, so people have books, they've read them, they don't need them, they give them to the library, and then we do a Friends of the Library sales. We just don't have enough room because due to COVID, we can't have the sales going on at this moment. So please hold on to those, and we'll ask for them at a future date. And a couple of things from our Lompoc Fire Department. It continues to work to fill vacancies within the agency, and they have now welcomed three new probationary firefighters on November 2. The three new firefighters will go through a seven-week onboarding academy and are expected to be cleared for shift work before Christmas, so that's a good thing. And also this past week, Chief Federman, Captain Nunes, and a member from the fleet traveled to the Pierce Manufacturing in Wisconsin, so the Pierce Fire Truck Company, to begin the final phases of the pre-construction agreement for our new truck that we—the council approved, with anticipation to see the much-needed fire engine hopefully by July 1 of next summer. And all went well with that one. It's on schedule, so that was what I had.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Something just come up, Ms. Troop. Did we ever get our money from the state for this COVID?
Yes, it was approximately $536,000.
Thank you for that. Seeing no more questions, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar Public Comment is maximum of three minutes for any of the items on Consent Calendar. The number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And you will have a maximum of three minutes, and mute your TV or radio. Is there anyone in council who would like to come to the podium and speak on Consent Calendar item? While we wait to see if there's any calls, I'll read, "The consent calendar is listed and considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting." Seeing no calls and no one rise, we will close Public Comment on Consent Calendar, and I will bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I'll move that we approve Consent Calendar.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. There are no staff presentations or announcements on the agenda, so we will move to general oral communications. This is three minutes maximum on city-related matters. Again, the phone number to call in is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV or radio. The floor is open for in-room oral communications. You have three minutes.
Okay, we're used to it. Good evening. My name is Jason Byard. I'm Southern Regional Manager of Relena's Feed and Pet Supply and a Lompoc resident. First of all, before we start negativity, just like to say thank you. It's—you know, Thanksgiving is just around the corner, and we are thankful for city leaders that are stepping up to do what's good for Lompoc, and we thank you guys for doing that, for being here and being a part of that. I'd like to address an issue that I've been here to address four different times and make this an even fifth. I'd like to address our property at 1620 North H Street and the issues that we've been experiencing there with property crimes, rampant, rampant drug use, prostitution, theft, assault, you name it. It's going on down there. We have seen a rise in the amount of tagging going unabated, and we actually caught a gentleman that has been tagging our building for many years, and we have documentation going back at least three of his crimes and things like that around our building. He was contacted by the police on our front sidewalk and released because it was a stale misdemeanor, and there's nothing that can be done because it's, you know, COVID-19 and all that kind of stuff. We need, as a city, to change how we approach these issues. And we could have a million cops on the street, but if we're going to find people that are committing crimes and are committing property crimes and they're making our places unsafe—I literally had a customer come up to me the other day and thanked me because our staff walks out to her car and escorts her into the building sometimes because of the people that are out walking around, and she's afraid to get out of her car sometimes because of the people that are around there. We were told to just call the police, call the police, call the police, but nothing is done. And I know it's not a city issue per se in the sense of you guys don't write the laws and things like that, but we need to come together to hopefully address these issues and address this in a way that is actually taking action on these people and not just allowing it to continue and to continue. And I was told by the police officer that contacted the gentleman, well, for what it's worth, he said he would stop. And if you go to the Mervin's Building today, you can see about 30 feet up. The day after he was contacted by the police officers, he got up on top of the Mervin's Building and spray painted right at the top of the facade. So he's obviously not going to stop and do these things. So I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Ball as he joins the council this next year and hoping to move Lompoc forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again to call in is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201.
Nick Nikolenko, resident of Lompoc. Our town is facing two pandemics right now. Not only are we facing COVID-19, but we're facing lawlessness in our community. We're facing violent crime. We're facing shootings, stabbings. Just this weekend, on Sunday, a juvenile was shot over on M Street, I believe. And I'm assuming the person's okay, but still, we've had way too many children lost in this community. We've had way too many grown adults lost in this community. Something needs to be done. We need a gang task force. There needs to be money found in the police budget for this because average citizens are at risk of violence. They could be in the crossfire. Two years ago, we had an innocent bystander, a 16-year-old girl, shot and killed as she was coming out of her apartment to see what was happening in her alleyway. So this cannot stand. We need to take action as a community. We need to find some way to end this before we have to bury another one of our sons and daughters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have three minutes for general oral communications.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Lompoc. My name is Sandra Jameson. I was involved with the last passing of the gang injunction in early 2000s. I was involved with that with Deputy Martinez because my children were almost murdered on your streets. We need that gang injunction passed. We cannot bury any more children. The person that Nick is talking about was murdered in the same spot. She was an innocent bystander. We just lost another female in the same complex, another innocent bystander. My granddaughter plays on the streets. I can't even imagine the loss of her just happening to be playing in friendly fire. The grief would be unbearable. We need this gang injunction passed. We need it to stop. We need the gangs to stop. And I pray for every single one of you because I know you carry a burden. All of you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Oral communications for three minutes. Seeing no calls in or additional in-person comments, we will close oral communication and bring it back to the agenda. Item number four, council request initiation of amendments to zoning code and general plan to allow cannabis distribution in the planned commercial development zone and allow cannabis events. And our city attorney, Jeff Malave, will make that presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This item is the council request. Back several months ago, the city council requested an agenda item to potentially initiate a zoning code amendment, a municipal code amendment, to allow cannabis distribution uses in our planned commercial development zone and to allow cannabis events in the city. Just to—as a preface, the very last page in the staff report is an attachment, and this shows the area that we're talking about when we talk about the planned commercial development district. It's all the dark marked parcels, mostly along north—the northern part of H Street, and then also along Ocean in the southeastern part of town. Currently, distribution uses for cannabis are only allowed in the industrial and the business park zones. So what this would do is would allow the distribution uses in the PCD zone. What a distribution use is, as far as cannabis is concerned, is the wholesale transportation, the wholesale and the transportation of cannabis or cannabis products in bulk, where the entity purchasing the cannabis or the cannabis products is a retailer and not an end user. So it's wholesale, and it's a storage for wholesale, and it's transportation for wholesale. This use is currently not within the intent or purpose of the planned commercial development zone. The purpose of the planned commercial development zone is to provide commercial areas for a wide variety of retail, office, and service-oriented enterprises. And the description of the planned commercial development zone says that it is a commercial area characterized by a variety of retail, office, and visitor-oriented businesses that rely on automobile access rather than pedestrian access. It says appropriate uses include destination retail, community and regional shopping centers, visitor-oriented businesses, and automobile-oriented businesses. So if we were to amend our code to allow cannabis distribution uses in this planned commercial development zone, we would need to amend our general plan to make the use consistent with what the purpose of the zone is. For this amendment for distribution in PCD, the planning staff is recommending that if the city council wishes to move forward with this, that performance standards and design requirements be written into the ordinance as requirements for this type of use if it goes in. And also, the planning staff is recommending that a conditional use permit be required for this type of distribution use, so that Planning Commission review and then potentially imposition of conditions on the use can be required to protect against potential impacts that can be things like odor, crime, traffic and circulation, and aesthetics and neighborhood compatibility. Our planning manager, Brian Halverson, is here tonight, and he will give a brief presentation after my staff report about what the form of—what this use actually is, what it looks like, how it operates, and he has some photographs of distribution uses from other—from another community that he'll share with the council. So moving on from allowing cannabis distribution in the PCD zone to the second part of this item, which is allowing cannabis events. A cannabis event is a particular type of event that is defined in state law in the Business and Professions Code. And it is an event where participants who are 21 years of age or older may sell and consume cannabis. So it is essentially—usually would take place outdoors, and it is—essentially takes the form of a festival or an expo where vendors can sell cannabis and cannabis-related products, and event-goers are allowed to smoke and consume cannabis on-site at the event as long as it all follows the state law restrictions and any city restrictions that the council may wish to put into the ordinance that you may eventually adopt. But as far as the state law requirements that we cannot change, state law does require that any access to areas where cannabis consumption is allowed has to be restricted to persons who are 21 years of age or older. Consumption of cannabis cannot be visible from any public place or any non-age-restricted area. The sale or consumption of alcohol and tobacco is not allowed at cannabis events. All participants who are selling cannabis or cannabis products at the event must have a state cannabis license. And one of the decision points for the council, if you wish to make it tonight, or if you wish to make this decision when the item might come back to you as an ordinance, is whether you would want vendors at the site to be required to have a Lompoc license to sell cannabis and cannabis products, or could they have a license just from the state or from any other jurisdiction in California. The California Bureau of Cannabis Control can require these events to cease operations immediately if, in the opinion of local law enforcement, it's necessary to protect public health and safety. And at these events, smoking of cannabis is prohibited in locations where other kinds of smoking are prohibited by law. So in Lompoc, we do have a whole section of our municipal code that prohibits smoking of tobacco in all city parks and other city-owned recreational areas. So if the council was considering having these cannabis events in city parks, for example, we would have to amend that section of our code that prohibits smoking in city parks. And that can be done, and we can make a special exception that allows smoking in parks only for cannabis events. So essentially, that is it. The city council requested this item, and the city council has the authority to initiate zoning code amendments. So that's why we're here, for the council to decide whether you want to initiate these zoning code amendments. If you do, then they will go through a process. We don't have the ordinance drafted yet. If you decide to move forward and initiate tonight, then staff will work on drafting up a draft ordinance, take it to the Planning Commission, and get input from the Planning Commission. They may make amendments. They may make recommendations to you, and then the ordinance will ultimately come to you for your consideration and adoption. That essentially completes my staff report tonight. I want to call Brian Halverson up to give his portion of the presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to put up just a few photos of a site visit that I did in the city of Grover Beach. I didn't have a lot of time to look at a lot of different areas, but since the city of Grover Beach did start their cannabis ordinance before the city of Lompoc, I thought it was appropriate. But before I get into that, let me grab this. I also passed out yesterday, and it's been posted to the city's website, a cannabis distributor type 11 fact sheet. That fact sheet is put out by the Bureau of Cannabis Control by the state of California. The reason why I passed that out is because a lot of us, including myself, didn't know kind of what distribution would entail, and I thought since this is something that's put out by the state, that it would be helpful to review it, especially in consideration of amending our code. I just wanted to real quickly read the first part of the flyer. It says, "A distributor is responsible for transporting cannabis goods between licensees, arranging for testing of cannabis goods, and conducting the quality assurance review of cannabis goods to ensure compliance with all packaging and labeling requirements. A licensed distributor may distribute cannabis goods, cannabis accessories, and licensees branded merchandise or promotional materials." And then the flyer goes on to list basically what this type of use would entail, some of the components, if you will. Of course, there's the transportation component, but also it includes packaging, labeling, and rolling. Those—these are uses that are typically found in an industrial zone, and the rolling is the actual cannabis material. They will roll it into a cigarette or whatever they're doing. There's also testing. Now, the testing, my understanding and talking to Mr. Malave, the testing wouldn't be done at these locations, but what they do is they arrange for it to go to a lab. So that's there as well. And then it talks about storage components as well. So let me go ahead and just show a few photos of the city of Grover Beach. I talked to one of the senior planners and asked them if they had this type of use, and they said yes. So I said, you know, where is it located? And so this is an area off of Highland in the city of Grover Beach. Across the street from this is actually Agland. So this area is an industrial area per their zoning map, and what you'll see is—you know, you'll see, you know, roll-up doors, you'll see some truck docks and things like that. Here's another building, you know, that's right nearby. Again, you're going to see truck docks, typical industrial building. Here's another one, and I wanted to show the location. This is the location where they are doing distribution right now in the city of Grover Beach. So it's 1141 Highland. This location—I walked around. I could actually smell a little bit of cannabis in the air. It wasn't very strong, but I could smell it. It was noticeable, but it wasn't in full operation at that time. You know, it's very—there wasn't very many cars or any people coming in and out, et cetera. This—that's actually the street that leads down to where that cannabis distributor is. And then there was another area where the— And then there was another area where the planner said they also have distribution. This is off of, I think it's, I think it's Barkus, and it comes near Huber Street. Again, this is an industrial area in the city of Grover Beach. So you have mini-storage in that area, and then, again, you have multi-tenant industrial buildings with roll-up doors. And then, there's another one right there. This is, this building right here is actually the location where the cannabis distribution is located. So the reason why I wanted to show those pictures is, I wanted to just mention that, you know, typically, this is where you'd find this type of use, is it an industrial area. That's also why the planning division was recommending a conditional use permit, because along H Street and Ocean, you may or may not, I can't speak for the council, want to see truck bays. You may or may not want the interface between other uses as well. And so, through the conditional use permit process, you could vet some of those issues out. Another thing is a clarification on the code amendment. Could we go back to that map with all the red parcels that are labeled? So part of this area is actually in the H Street overlay as well, and H Street overlay runs north and south on H Street. Oh, actually, sorry, it's on North H Street. And it, I don't have my pointer. It actually goes a little farther down, but it goes all the way up, and then it ends just south of the Pet Lodge, so that area. So the code would have to be amended as well, the H Street overlay area. Now, that area also allows residential, and I have brought it up in the past, but the interface with residential, if you get residential one day in those areas, you know, could be something that you would want to mitigate, whatever those impacts may be, whether it's crime or odor, noise, aesthetics, you know. That might be, for example, let's say someone near, lives near the truck bay, that could be noisy, they may not want to be next to a truck bay. So the only other thing I was going to clarify is, one, if the council had any questions regarding the use based on the flyer that was passed out and distributed, and also, if they had any questions regarding the environmental review, which would be required, and the recommendation regarding the CUP. And that concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Mosby.
Mr. Halverson, can you tell me what percentage of the PCD is currently vacant in the city of Lompoc?
No, I do not have that information.
Can you tell me how many units in the PCD have roll-up doors on them?
That I don't know, but generally, the roll-up doors are not facing H Street.
So you don't know. How many of them have loading docks already?
That I would have to look into. I don't have that information. If, like, for a Walmart, you'll see them in the back, but the primary use is usually not the distribution use. Usually, it's another use.
How many people in the PCD currently now receive wholesale deliveries?
I wasn't prepared to give you that information.
How many people in the PCD receive wholesale deliveries?
Right, I don't have that data.
Okay. I'd say just about everybody tries to buy wholesale versus on retail. So you already see, half this component is already happening in the PCD, and I'd say you probably got 30% to 40% of the PCD is vacant right now. And you have a large amount of facilities have roll-up doors in them and loading docks in them in the PCD. So a lot of the anomalies you showed that are industrials are already available in the PCD currently right now. And, and most people buy wholesale already. Wholesale deliveries are already coming towards the retail component. I think retail, people buy retail or sell retail. So I mean, there's a lot of movement that needs to be out here. I think it would have been appropriate if you showed how many facilities in the city of Lompoc could apply to this and would meet things very similar in the PCD that showed the pictures that you showed up there. I think this is, this is one of the reasons why. You showed me a lot of reasons why not to do this, but I think you could have showed a lot of reasons why we could do this. And I think it's, it's important to have both sides of the picture. And I, you know, this is one of the things Lompoc has done for many years of why we can't do things. And I'm not asking these to be antagonistic towards you, but I think there's positive goals that we need to look at, is how we can do things and how things can fit the picture, whether it's this or anything else. That's, that's why I was asking those questions.
Just to clarify real quickly, so I understand that we talk often, and so I understand how to do it is a very good point. So that's why we suggested the CUP. So the CUP is a mechanism that can protect the community, but also get what the council's wanting, which is a use, introduce a use that you typically, and I mean that in a serious term, is a use typically you don't see in a shop, area that's typically for shopping centers.
Well, isn't it true that shopping as we know it is, is changing drastically through a lot of people making deliveries now? It's not walk-up retail anymore. A lot of it's being delivered, and we have a lot of pizza places that, some of them are 100% delivery. In fact, we're going back down now to pick up and mostly delivery now, now that we've rolled back with the COVID. So I mean, in retail, we've seen with DoorDash and many of these other things are already being delivered to people's homes. So we need to try to stay ahead of the curve here in what's happening as time progresses. And if we sit back like some of the big catalog stores, you know, what, long ago, everybody ordered from this monster catalog, and those things have kind of faded away. And I think we need to be proactive, not reactive here, and that's what I'm trying to look at, is how we can get somewhere to fill so many of our vacant properties you see in town. There's at least 30% to 40% are vacant, and I think we can, you know, try to look at how we can get this done and how we can't, not why how we can't.
I think that this is initiation. You need better direction from us as to what we're looking for. Some of the points Councilmember Mosby brought up are questions I had about how much of a demand is there for distribution, how much is already being utilized in the commercial and industrial areas where it's already allowed. We do already allow distribution. How much of that has been taken up? So are we creating a glut of potential space when we should be maybe preserving it? So it's, it's something we need to look at. Do we already allow distribution of non-cannabis in VCD? You know, is there other things that are, is there a Walmart distribution center or an Amazon distribution center that might look to come into the area? So are we setting precedence by talking about it for cannabis, which has a lot more limitations, but opening the door to potentially other businesses doing the same thing? So I think it's an ongoing discussion that we absolutely do need to have and get a lot of questions answered before we just direct you to add it to the ordinance. The same goes for cannabis events. When I was approached about this, it was really about having a festival on the large scale that is similar to the Wine Festival or the Flower Festival, not about small events, not about weekend events, but literally a big annual event that is done for a very specific purpose, for a very short window, and just how would we accommodate that? So I think it's important discussions to have, not just with the planning commission, but also with our community, and to get the feedback from the community members, given we've had cannabis in the community now almost three years. How is it impacting them? How's the business impacting them, as well as the industry itself? What is the industry looking for? Does the industry see and need more distribution locations? Does the industry want festival opportunities? So I think this isn't a short-term discussion. This is a laundry list of questions we all have and an important conversation that we add to and make sure that the ordinance that we've created isn't being complicated or creating more of a pressure for those that are in the planned commercial zones, like we had when we did it in the industrial and the commercial zones, and caused some people to be pushed out. So we need to be really careful there. Any more questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Thank you. We will now open the floor for a public comment on this item. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201, and you will have three minutes. Remember to mute your TV or radio, and we'll start with in-room comments.
Hello, Nick Lenko. I, for one, am seeing the economic impact of the cannabis industry in our community. A lot of industries, a lot of businesses are having challenging times right now with COVID. The cannabis industry has given us a tax base that has supplemented what we've lost during this time. Why not have some orchestrated, well-put-together events? Let's, let's attract people to Lompoc. Let's bring tourism here. They have cannabis restaurants in LA. Why not have some here? That'll bring tourism, that'll bring people, that'll give people a reason to come to Lompoc. We have bars, we have wineries. People can go to a bar and get, you know, very highly impaired. Cannabis does not impair people as much as alcohol does. It does not affect the body and the mind as, as highly as alcohol does. So what harm could there be to look at another revenue source for our community? Look at a way to fix our vacant buildings, you know, put businesses in our vacant buildings? Let's, let's industrialize this town and make it great again. We've, we've lost a lot of jobs. A lot of people have moved out of this community because there's nothing here. Why not make something here? Give people a reason to come to Lompoc. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Hello, Sandra Jameson. I actually don't agree with all the medical marijuana stuff, because my daughter trained at St. Dalton School of Ballet, and she was here for 70 years, and her daughter took it over Miss Angela and built the School of Ballet that was right here in the south side of town. All of the medical marijuana places came in, which was completely not supposed to happen around a school. So she went over to the Long Shopping Center. Her husband redid the whole thing, then COVID hit. So my granddaughter, who was studying ballet, where her mother studied ballet, and all these other students were impacted, she's permanently closed, permanently closed. As it is, we don't have enough things for the children to do in this city. And so, no, I don't want Lompoc to be known as a place to come get high. I'm sorry. You know, I, I worked as a nurse, I watched, I helped my, my patients that were using it, and I completely agree with what it's, for what it's to be used for. And I, myself, was injured. I got a medical marijuana card, tried it, and I was glued to the couch. I couldn't function. I've never smoked weed, never did drugs, and no, it didn't work for me, because I have to be alert. I have to be able to drive and pick up my grandchildren. So with, with regarding medical marijuana, there needs to be, we don't want to be known as a place to come get high and wine. There's got to be more to draw people here. I'm so happy that we're having the spaceport coming here. I think that's amazing. This is what we want for the city. It's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring businesses, and thank you for Mr. Mosby for what he's doing with the land management. Now we can go out to, to the beach, but we need to be known for more than just marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. The floor is still open for in-room comments. Seeing no one call and no additional in-room comments, we will close that and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Cordova.
So in reviewing this information, I, I personally don't think that we have enough information right now for us. I realize that this was a council request to have this information brought by staff, but I think that there's a lot of factors that need to be considered with this before we can move forward, and in consideration also what Mayor Osborne said, you know, being able to give staff clear direction as to what we want to do. Clearly, tonight, we wouldn't have that clear direction as to what we want to do. I believe that there's more issues that need to be looked at when we're looking at placing this outside of just commercial or industrial areas. As, as we've already know, some of this did displace some of our other businesses from those areas, those existing areas. Expanding it out to the areas of PCD, I think that you're pretty much giving the whole city up to, to this, which is concerning for me, because I think there's areas that we need to look at, such as air quality. We need to, I definitely would say that if that was the majority of the council's ruling to go this route, a CUP definitely is something that would be required, and, and I just feel that, why wouldn't we take this out to the community, especially in those areas, and get that feedback from them and see how they feel about that as well? As far as the events go, I would not be in favor, at this point in time, of holding any such events in public parks or public areas where our children and our other community residents would not be able to go out there and enjoy what is their right and what is their public access or public areas as well. Because again, it goes back to the whole air quality and, and all of that. I think that there's just a lot more that we need to do, and my fear would be that we go through and we make decisions without fully vetting all the consequences and all the ramifications, all the considerations, all the impacts, for the sake of saying that Lompoc needs more businesses. I'm all for all businesses in Lompoc, but I am not for one business in Lompoc. And I have said that before. So to sell our city on the fact that cannabis is our saving grace, or the fact that that's where we're going to get jobs, I feel that that is irresponsible. I do feel that as an industry, we do owe them the same respect to provide them services in our city, which we're currently doing already. But to move forward on this, I would not be in favor of doing so at this time without having considered all of the things. And also, by putting it in the PCD, a concern of mine would be, the state already prohibits the ability for people to consume tobacco and alcohol in a lot of those areas. You have tobacco and alcohol in those areas. So I realize that maybe it may not be happening in the particular location where that's happening, but if they can go next door and buy a beer, it's happening. So I don't know.
Councilmember Mosby.
So I guess the reason why I brought up about, not the events, but about the distribution in the PCD is after going around and seeing how other areas align, aligning, and actually, distribution is one of the most benign segments of cannabis, yet it's one of the highest paying for jobs. It doesn't allow smoking there. Product is already in the packaging. I haven't heard anybody talking about rolling in distribution facilities. Everything that I've seen is already prepackaged, sealed, relatively benign, but the ability to potentially bring jobs to the community and fill up some of the vacant places. I'd be for distribution of all kinds in the PCD. It's happening right now. I mean, we have pizza distributors in the PCD, and there's a lot of distribution that comes out of it, it's just that we don't recognize it that way. Anybody that's making delivery is doing distribution. This just brings it to another level, and again, like I said, it's, it's relatively benign. They're already entering into the PCD making deliveries. So this would be just bringing it and then taking it out from it. Again, my, my thought is, if I had understood more about it originally when we were designing the ordinance, I would have seen that it would have when we were designing the ordinance, I would have seen that it would have fit into the PCD. And we have a lot of places that could easily align with this. Completely agree with the CUP process because of its newness and such. I have no problem with that. I do agree that, as your statement is, maybe we are a little early, especially with the COVID, on the events. That's why I'm not talking about the events component, just the distribution component that we have here. And again, think of all the vacant properties that are already currently available in the PCD. There are many, many, many vacant properties, and there really isn't a hope for filling them in the future. You actually see more and more being emptied every day right now. Is there a demand across the whole state? Is everybody going to rush to Lompok? Don't know. But we don't do those level of analytics for all the other businesses. We don't design something anticipating that level. I don't think you would have the big pushout. I don't necessarily see you would have a huge push-in. But even if you brought 50 or 100 jobs to this town or community, those are things that are important, especially in today's times. A lot of these jobs and talking to some of the people in this, they're making $100,000 to $200,000 a year in the distribution components. So I think it's something that could advance forward with the staff recommendation that is in here. It's going to take several meetings before it gets through. It would give you plenty of time to do more studies and see on this. Or when it came back forward, it'd give you plenty of time to say no. But I think it would be at least something to advance towards the future.
Councilmember Cordova.
And what a great point to point out all the vacancies in our storefronts because guess what? As a city, we couldn't do anything to help save any of the businesses that went under during COVID and prior to COVID that were already going under. But we sure as heck will find a way to make sure that cannabis can go throughout our entire town. Again, we are, I don't have a problem with catering to the cannabis industry. What I have a problem to is catering only to the cannabis industry. When we have a lot of businesses that reached out to our city, I have a lot of business owners that emailed me and said, what can the city do to help me stay open? There was nothing that could be done. So what a great thing to point out. Studies, yes. And part of the problem that we have in this community is that we want to be able to identify what this community is, when in reality, Lompok has so many things, whether we're talking about, you know, fine, I understand that retail right now is an industry that is currently nationwide and beyond is an industry that is shaking. But we have the, we do still have the tourism industry. We do still have the wine industry. We do still have, you know, production. We do still have ag. We do still have restaurants. We do still have all of, a bunch of other industries that also make up the economic, the whole pie of what is the economic structure of Lompok. So in my opinion, where the studies also need to go is what makes for a healthy balance in a community, rather than just saying, we know what's best. It's cannabis, and that's what we're going to plug into all of our storefronts.
Councilmember Starbuck.
This is a very small part of a zoning ordinance. I'm going to just go back in history. The county displaced us several hundred units of industrial property. I mean, they took it, period. That's it. It's not industrial anymore. Councils of past said, let's, you know, grab the wine industry. Let's give them an incubator. So we changed all of our industrial zoning, CUP, and we've developed a wine ghetto. We catered to the wine ghetto for years. Restaurants, food, sewer lines, hotel, the whole thing. We've been through it over and over and over. This is one change in a giant ordinance on one small facet of an industry that will be vetted thoroughly through a planning commission. It's not any kind of selective growth of a specific industry. I'd like to make a motion if we're done arguing. I'd like to recommend staff's recommendation that we go ahead and move forward with the zoning and general plan amendment.
Councilmember Cordova.
I would like to put a second motion on the floor that we push this past to when we are out of COVID and we can actually get some community feedback and also the business owners in the PCD zoning district because it's, the statement is not fair because we already have allowed cannabis. It's already in our commercial and industrial zones. So it's not like we're blocking them from anything. This was a council request. I don't even know if there's anyone from the actual cannabis industry that's here vying for this position or whether we just said, let's do it for them. So I would love to see the feedback from them as well, and I would love to see the feedback from our community residents as well as from the people that actually are stakeholders in the PCD as well.
Okay. So there's a motion, and then there's a substitute motion. I'm going to propose a combination of the two. It's obvious we need more information, and the Planning Commission is designed to evaluate this kind of information and do the homework for us so that we can better understand the impact. So I think taking Councilmember Starbuck's motion to send it to the Planning Commission and have them start vetting this is important. And I think taking Councilmember Cordova's concerns into it means that the Planning Commission should not just evaluate adding cannabis distribution because it's setting a precedence. We should look at what kind of distribution as a business, whether it's something like Walmart distribution or an Amazon distribution or grocery distribution, could be utilized so that it is not singular focused. The cannabis industry requires a few additional things that are needed. It would require a change to our cannabis ordinance, but to make it a balance, I think it needs to have, let's look at if we introduce distribution into the PCD zone, what does that mean? And so I'd like to combine the two of your motions into move it to the Planning Commission for evaluation and incorporate evaluating from your concerns, Councilmember Cordova.
I would be okay with that, and I would second that, if it separates to them the events from the distribution. I think it's fair to talk about distribution of other businesses. I think that's important because again, then we're not singling out and making it seem like we're catering to one industry. So I approve of that. But I would also think that we would require the Planning Commission then to also do studies and potentially an air quality. I don't know, at some point in time, that has to be considered. And who's going to pay for that?
So I think that's where we get that information, right, is the Planning Commission can evaluate, see what the cost will end up costing us, and we can separate out the events. I think bringing the event conversation back at a separate date later in the spring, as we see the results of COVID coming under control and what that might look, and get us more information on what events look like, we can separate them out. I think that would be the split. Councilmember Mosby.
So your motion is on, number one, lining with all that's in here in the staff report, as long as the broader view of all distribution in PCD. I'll give you a second on that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Are we only sending the PCD distribution to the Planning Commission? Are we also sending the events?
The request was to hold off on the events, and so I modified my motion to bring that back as a separate topic in the spring and just split it out. So the motion is to put events on hold until the spring, and you can look at your agendas and let me know when that's a good time. To send the PCD discussion for all forms of distribution, including cannabis, to the Planning Commission for research, discussion, and recommendations back to council. And I have a second from Councilmember Mosby. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. Any additional written communications?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, the final oral communication for the evening is two minutes maximum. Please call 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201 for two minutes on oral communications regarding city matters. The floor is open in room. Seeing no one rise and the phone not ring, we will close the final oral communication of the evening and start with council comments and meeting reports. And we will start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Cordova.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Just wanted to make a comment. I guess our ad hoc committee for reimbursement study, the request for that, I was on an ad hoc a number of years ago for enterprise reimbursement. And, you know, maybe the city didn't really want to hear what we concluded out of the ad hoc, but I'll just be very brief with it. With those who don't understand what enterprise reimbursement is, it's a way that the city paid for a study to charge, let's just say, and I'm being paraphrasing here, for general services to the utilities. And it's probably somewhere in about the $3.5 million a year right now. We did stop it at a certain level. It was going to be escalating over the next 15 budget cycles. Basically, again, paraphrasing real fast, some of it is very arbitrary. I definitely believe that there definitely needs to be a new study done. There's a lot of case law that has come out now that has shown some of the things to be kind of questionable. One of them is the, you know, it's kind of questionable what we charge the wastewater plant, what approximately $800,000 a year for public safety support. So there are some things that are questionable that are going on there. I'm not calling them in a certain direction or stuff, but I think the city should, and again, just paraphrasing real fast, get out there and do a new study on this enterprise reimbursement. And some of those items, they need to definitely tune up, and some of them they probably shouldn't be doing. That's it.
Thank you. I attended the NCPA Regulation and Legislative Speaker Series, NCPA's monthly meeting, Communify Board Meeting, which is formerly CAC, the Future Advisory Board Meeting, Santa Barbara County's legislative briefings, the Combined Space Force Command Change Ceremony yesterday. And I want to say my condolences to my appointee to the Beautification Committee's family, Judy McKinnon, passed away. So thank you, Judy, for your service, and I am so sorry to her family to hear of her passing. We have returned to purple. Please be aware that wearing your mask is about caring for others and potentially being an asymptomatic carrier. Be careful with your gatherings this holiday season. It is important to live our lives and be around family, but it's also careful to have that family after COVID. So please remember to be safe. We will adjourn the Lompok City Council until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on December 1, 2020.